Approve any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council, I do have one addition for you. You can put it under new business, item fourteen point five. It's a request to close a road for a mock crash over by the high school. Can I say add that to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda with the addition.
Second. Motion by Tim, second by Dave to approve the agenda with the addition. Home in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll say nay. Motion carries. Tim vacation, Hutchinson Navy General Free Church. Good evening.
Yeah. Hi, Mike Eisenhagen, Hutchy Free. Thanks for having me. Please pray if you're so late. Gracious Lord, thank you for having us here today and helping us to make it through this long winter. But I just pray that you would be with our city, that you would be with the leaders here in this room, that you would be with the rest of the staff here in the city as well. Lord, help us with peace and prosperity and unity. Lord, help us to seek after you and seek to love this community that you've placed here, Lord. Thank you for all that you've done, and I pray that you have blessed the rest of this meeting. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? All righty, we do have a resolution underneath there. We have resolution number one five five nine four. Resolution accepting three thousand dollars donation from Troy Polis for the Shady Ridge Park Project.
Motion approved, resolution one five five nine four.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve the donation. Any other? Home in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll say nay. Motion carries. Citizens addressing the council, just please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Ready approval of minutes. We have regular meeting minutes of March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
Oh. To approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Dave, second by Tim to approve the minutes. Any other discussion? Home in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is approval of issuing temporary liquor license to the Hutchinson Center for the Arts on April twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-three. B is approval of out-of-state travel for firefighter fighters to attend the FDIC International Fire Conference in Indianapolis, Indiana, from April twenty seventh through the twenty-ninth of two thousand twenty-three. C is approval of resolution number one five five nine six, resolution to sell at auction surplus property with BDH one thirty-four gas series, a fire unit, the Civic Arena, East Rink. D is approval of resolution number one five five nine seven, resolution to sell at auction, surplus auction, property Hutch Fire Department, set of tires from tanker truck number six. E is approval of purchase of total mix ration mixer for creekside soils. F is approval Hutchinson J.C. Water Carnival request. G is approval Dairy Day Celebration, June second at two thousand twenty-three in Library Square. H is approval of Riverside Music Festival on July fourteenth and fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three in Masonic West River Park. I is approval of Minnesota Pottery Festival, July twenty-ninth and thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three in Masonic West River Park. J is approval of Relay for Life event being held August fourth, two thousand twenty-three at West River Park. K is approval of board reappointments, that's Tim Hacker to the planning commission until March two thousand twenty-eight. Dave Hellstep to the senior advisory board, January two thousand twenty-six. And Julie Loftall to the library board to April of two thousand twenty-six. And L is claims appropriation and contract payments. Anything, anybody want to pull up for discussion? Entertainer motion.
Make motion to approve.
A second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Home in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll say nay. Motion carries. Moving on down to communication requests, petitions, park and decoration, community education, year-end report. Good evening, Lynn.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Let's go put this on here. Included in your packet this evening was a comprehensive overview of the two thousand twenty-two PRCE annual report. But I'm just gonna go over some of the highlights for you this evening. Located on the screen are our three PRCE brochures that we put out to publication to the community that they receive via the mail. We do send out a winter, spring, summer, and a fall brochure, which features all of our activities and programs throughout those months. Winter, spring includes January to May, summer is May to August, and fall is September to December. Parks and natural resources. So we saw a significant increase in vandalism all over our parks and throughout public spaces in our community this year. And we did a few things to help mitigate that. We worked with the police department to put in some temporary cameras to try and maybe catch some of the vandals or just alleviate some of the vandalism that we saw. But we started tracking to see where our trends were and just make sure we're keeping track of how much money that the city is spending to mitigate some of these incidences around the community. We saw an increase in the usage of Masonic West River Campground. We had a twenty percent increase in our site usage from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two. There was a hundred and seventy days available for camping within Masonic West River. And we again see that the full hookup sites continue to be the most popular sites rented. There wasn't a weekend in which you could find a full hookup site available at all, which was really fun to see that there's such a big need for those sites, that we're looking for the future to see how we can convert some of our non-electric sites to at least to electric to help fulfill that need that we have in our campground. A lot of what we do in our Parks Department is done via generous donations from community groups and organizations. Some of the high-level ones that we had were the Community Foundation gave us ten grand for AFS Park, some improvements down there. We worked with the Hutchinson Leadership Group to do a bunch of improvements at AFS Park. And those will like continue into this year as well, as we finish those. Hutchinson Health Foundation, they gave us a grant to help with our bike fleet project and also some trail cameras. SHIP, which is statewide health improvement partnership through Meeker McLeod Sibley. They gave us a very generous donation to help complete our bike fleet project, which I'll talk about later. Kiwanis Club, they gave us some money to help out with that park and many more other groups throughout the years. But we really thank our partners for those generous donations. Received, we received a ten thousand dollars in grant dollars for completing a rail system at Girl Scout Park for South Fork Crow River Community Outlook bump pier project, which helped with accessibility. We put a trail up to the bump out and also also help for safety reasons at that location. And then we wrote and received a fifty thousand dollar DNR grant for prairie restorations, which that work will be completed in two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-six. Just some general site improvements. We've been working at the campground to make everything a little bit more ADA accessible. We had the AFS Park Improvement Project, which I talked about. We did contracts and restoration through the Public Arts, our permanent art statues. We had a gentleman called Darwin Wolf come in, and he did some restorative practices to our permanent sculpture pieces. Kiwanis Park got a new playground, and we repainted and restored the Rocket. The, we worked with the Hutchinson Fire Department for the install of Fireman's Park. We did some improvements at Rotary Park, which included a cement pad and new bike racks. And then we continue to try and add into our holiday decorations every year. And if you were downtown, we did include two six-feet large snowflakes into our holiday decorations. Roberts Park, we did a Northwest Field Renovation Project, and we spent two thousand six hundred eighty hours on athletic field maintenance throughout the year. This was our first year that we did a maintenance agreement with the Liquor Hutch and provided their outdoor landscaping. We did some mulching downtown. We did the irrigation installation at the new police department. And then we did a lot of work on the garden plots for the two thousand twenty-three planting season. Our natural resources and forestry, we work really closely with Hutchinson High School, landscape and natural resource students, and do various projects throughout the city and then also on the school campus. And then again, the Hutchinson Leadership Institute Small Group, they did an extended nature trail in Northwoods Park. This graph just shows shelter reservations in two thousand twenty-two, the most popular being the Depot. We got a hundred and fifty-four reservations at the Depot, making it by far the most popular spot rented within our park system. Rotary Park was second with sixty-nine rentals, and then Masonic West River with fifty-eight. But the Depot is definitely our most sought-after and the most popular rental. One of the things that's nice about the Depot is year-round, whereas our other ones, besides Kiwanis and Northwoods, they are not year-round. So it does show a little bit that it can be used more throughout the year. One really large project that we took on this past year was the Hutchinson Community Bike Fleet Project. This, the pictures show the completed project, which includes forty bikes, forty helmets, safety equipment, and various bike fix-it equipment that the community can use. It's in an enclosed trailer, so it is mobile, and it can be moved around. SHIP donated thirty thousand dollars to this project, along with Hutchinson Health, donated another ten thousand for this project to be completed. Various other organizations help make this project doable. But it's utilized by teachers throughout the community that are trained in the Minnesota Bike Walk Fund Curriculum, and it can be utilized in Meeker, McLeod, and Sibley counties if those teachers are trained. And then also, we plan to use it for some community events and different things like that. But the picture down here shows some middle school students last year. They stopped by the rec center when they were utilizing the bikes, and they, the teachers really seemed to like it. Birch Arena went through a big year of construction, planning, and management implementation. We had a lot of construction going on with the East Rink, East Rink Roof and Facade Replacement Project. The work was completed by Voss Construction and Ralph's Nationery. But we are working on the HVAC upgrades, the East Rink, and those are actually being completed this week. So that will button up that piece of the project. The whole arena will have LED lighting by the end of this year. The East Rink was finalized during construction, and the West Rink will get the rest of their lighting completed in two thousand twenty-three, helping to make it more energy efficient throughout the year. We also went through an East Rink concession upgrade, and new scoreboard was added into the East Rink. So lots of improvements going on to the Birch Arena East Rink. We also integrated a new ice scheduling software to make it more user-friendly for our consumers. It's called Finley Sport. It's very easy to integrate into our system. It allows for ease of transition for our users to see when ice is available. One of the things in two thousand twenty-two that we really worked towards was extending our ice season to provide opportunities not only to the Hutchinson Hockey Association and Hutchinson Figure Skating Association, but also to bring in some outside user groups to have rentable ice time as well, too. So spring ice was new, and we generated a hundred and, about a hundred and fifty hours of rentable ice. Summer ice, we used to have a shorter summer ice season, but we extended it to six weeks instead of three. So we had two hundred and twenty-four and a half hours. And then fall ice was a small season of ice added, coming in at about fifty-six and a half hours. The West Rink has, really serves no other purpose because of the sand-bottom floor. Whereas the East Rink, we have the turf, we can have a turf season in there. So it's a really nice addition to keep ice year-round in the West Rink, because it's the only thing that that rink can be utilized for within our operations. And then we began discussions with representation from a junior league hockey team. They're looking to really relocate their team from Iowa to Hutchinson. And so we're just going through those conversations with them now. This graph just shows the ice time report. So for two thousand twenty-two, we had one thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight hours of ice sold. And you can see it's split up between youth hockey, figure skating, summer ice, spring ice, and fall ice, which were new, they've never, we have no comparison hours because they were new this year. And then boys' high school hockey, girls' high school hockey, and then total ice time. You obviously can see the dip in two thousand twenty when things were closed down, but ice time is coming back up. Recreation programs, we continue to foster relationships with associations to provide quality recreation programs throughout our whole system. We did implement again a new registration system. We had transitioned the year before to ActiveNet, and we found out it was not a viable registration software for our system, so we transitioned again to Civic Rec. And that's much better for our needs, but we went through another whole year of training and having to teach the community and make sure everyone knows that yet again, you have to have another new login and password for our system. But this one will hopefully be here for a while. We did some updates to our PRCE website. Hutchinson Girls Softball Association decided to disband and return the program to PRCE. So last summer was the first summer that we again have softball through PRCE, and we saw the numbers grow, and they're growing again this year. Pickleball continues to be on the, on the rise in Hutchinson. We added more indoor pickleball times, mostly to the evening, and also we had daytime hours before, but just to meet that rising demand. And then some of the local pickleball groups came together and said they would really like to see wind screens at the Park Elementary Tennis Courts that they utilize for pickleball. So they helped raise some funds, and we purchased new wind screens that they just put up today at Park Elementary. So if you want to see them, you can go take a look. But last year was the first year we got them up around mid-July. And then thank you to Hutchinson Health, they sponsored free indoor youth and family open gym this past year and then into two thousand twenty-three, so the youth could come and utilize our gym anytime we were open, and it was free for the youth. So that was a great addition to the rec center. And we saw a huge increase in the number of youth coming into the rec center for that free, free open gym, especially on non-school days and then during the holiday breaks and stuff like that. So it was really nice to have lots of youth inside the gym. This graph depicts some of our youth program participation. Indoor soccer has really taken off. And this chart shows what it was in two thousand twelve and then what it was in two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two. But indoor soccer has grown tremendously in Hutchinson. Some of the other sports for youth programs have, have kind of gone up and down over the years, but some have stayed pretty steady. It just shows a good depiction of where we kind of stand and where we're going for our youth programs. And we've also added more as the years have gone on as well, too. Youth lacrosse is not in here, but that's another one that's on the rise here in Hutchinson as well. Adult program, we're starting to see a decline in the amount of adult program participation, but then we see a huge rise in pickleball. But it's more of the adult programs that are more leagues. So these would be the leagues that adults have to commit to, and they'll be for a whole season. We've seen a huge decline since two thousand twelve. Over the last couple of years even, from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two, we've seen a little bit of a decline. Again, I think people have now shifted their focus to their kids, or they're looking at different alternatives, not maybe doing league sports, some more just pickup games. And then we see pickleball on the rise as well, too. But total, we had eighty-eight adult program teams. Hutchinson Aquatic Center had a really good summer last year. Our attendance totaled forty-three thousand one hundred and twenty patrons. And that attendance does not include any of our private rentals we take in. So we get a variety of private rentals, high tides, rents from the pool as well. Those are not included in these numbers. Those are all strictly just open swim times, and that's how many patrons we had through our doors at the aquatic center for open swim. Also, in two thousand twenty-two, we had six sponsored free family swim nights. Three of them were Hutchinson Health sponsored, and three of them were sponsored by Common Cup. Those were typically on a Thursday night for three hours from five to eight. And those are very popular evenings for the community to come and swim if they don't want to buy a pass or pay for admission. But those were very heavily attended. And then Swim Lessons at Carlson Pool, we were able to have six hundred and thirteen participants in swim lessons, which is almost more than double what we had the previous year. We are just still coming off of COVID restrictions in two thousand twenty-one, so it was really good to see that number grow. This graph just shows again the outdoor pool attendance. You're a little bit more than we were in two thousand twenty-one. And then obviously, the first year the pool was back open was a huge spike as it was a brand-new pool, and then we did not open in two thousand twenty. Hutchinson Event Center, we did a little bit of shifting of staffing. We had a retirement at the end of two thousand twenty-one. Our coordinator position was transitioned into more of a programmer. And then our PRCE receptionist transitioned into a full-time role to help fill that void as we operated the Hutchinson Event Center and Senior Center in two thousand twenty-two. In January of two thousand twenty-two, we hosted an open forum for the seniors, as there were a lot of unknowns of what operations were gonna look like moving forward. And it was a good time for the community to come and ask questions and address kind of what the future of the Event Center and Senior Center was. It was very well-attended, and a lot of questions were answered. And then in February of two thousand twenty-two, we had a flood that occurred in the Great Room, and we spent a lot of time cleaning up and having to restore some of the flooring after that. But again, we just continue planning for future operations. And two thousand twenty-three got, went into more modified operations at the Event Center as well, too. But we did have a total of a hundred and eighty-three events in two thousand twenty-two. Seven weddings, eight private events, twenty-two city events, and a hundred and forty-six business events took place. Hutchinson Senior Center, we see a settle, steady growth in the number of participants all the time. But we had about ten thousand three hundred and twenty-seven participants that came for various activities and programs at the Hutchinson Senior Center. One of the things that they do is card, they have a card-making club. I thought this was really cool. They, they sold one thousand four hundred and thirty-five cards in two thousand twenty-two. So they brought in eight hundred and sixty-one dollars, it's a little fundraiser for them, but it was an increase of five hundred and eleven dollars from the year before. If you're looking for cards, that's the place to go. They're sixty cents, and they're great. The seniors do a really good job recreating and recycling old green cards. So if you're looking for a card, that's where you should go. They did raise money for a flight pool, and they installed the Thank You plaque in August. They also do an annual book and puzzle sale. So if you're looking for books and puzzles, you can go to the Senior Center that's coming up in August, and they sell lots of books and puzzles there. It's another good fundraiser for the seniors. And then one of the things we continue to look at and strive and try to change is our senior population is looking for much more active things to do. So as the years have gone on, this picture down here shows a sale exercise program that's very heavily attended by the seniors. We bought some beanbag boards, so the seniors are now doing, they're playing cornhole once a week. We're looking to buy more because it's really, it's been a very popular event for them. We've encouraged them to go riverwalking at the aquatic center, and we're trying to start a walking club. So Hutchinson Senior Center is really trying to come up with new trends and ideas because seniors really do want to be more active. They still are very, very competitive with bingo and cards, but they're looking for more active things to do, too. This just shows the monthly usage at the Senior Center. August is our most heavily attended. We track how many seniors walk through the door every day. August had one thousand and forty-five seniors that came in. We see a little bit of decrease in December and January because we lose some of our snowbirds that go down south, but then they always come back in the summer. Community education is also housed under our department, which is a part of the school district, IST four-two-three. So their reporting is a little bit different than the city's, but they report July one to June thirtieth. So summer of two thousand twenty-one, we offered forty-five camps and activities throughout the months of June, July, and August. We made a total of nine hundred and seven participants, and we offered three new activities through community. And those include a lot of football camps, volleyball camps, soccer camps, a lot of camps that are done by the high school coaches and high school athletes for our youth. So those are a really good cross-section to get those high school athletes in with our youth programs, coaching and helping bridge that gap between the two. Fall two thousand twenty-one, we offered fifty-four activities throughout the months of August, September, October, November, and December. We had five, or four hundred and fifty-eight participants in thirteen new activities. In the fall and winter, we tend to hold a lot more activities for adults as they're looking for things to do. Lots of classes that are offered for the adults and also the youth as well. And then winter, spring offered eighty-three activities throughout the months of January, February, March, April, and May, the total of seven hundred and seventeen participants and four new activities. So community education kind of fills a void of what Parks and Rec does not offer, but we fit really well together to make sure we're providing a comprehensive system for everybody. If there's a need or something that someone's interested in doing, community education can usually come up with a class for that. This graph just shows throughout the summer, fall, and winter, our enrollment. Summer is obviously the biggest time where we have the most participants, and that just shows how many classes were offered and held. One new class, which was really neat, on the left, on the left bottom hand side, it was a hammocking class. We had a gentleman come in and teach hammocking and some of the rules and just guidelines to do hammocking in parks. So just a very unique class that was offered to the community. Also housed in there, under community education is middle-level activities. Direct supervision under the district activities director, but they work very closely with our department to offer those programs. Also adult basic education, so anyone looking to get a GED, learn maybe a second language or gets brush-up on their computer skills or things like that, that also goes through our department as well, but it's housed over at Ridgewater College. And then ECFE, which is Early Childhood Family Education, again, works with community education, but is housed at West Elementary. So a lot of collaboration happening through community. And then also, I just wanted to think, we have a ton of sponsors and donors throughout the year. And this just shows, this is just general fund donations that we brought in in two thousand twenty-two, so it doesn't reflect any donations that were collected specifically for capital projects or community improvement funds, but stuff that just goes through our general fund. We brought in just shy of fifty thousand dollars of sponsors and donors. Our biggest one being recreation, which we get a lot of sponsors for youth activities, our field sponsors, different things like that. But we just really appreciate the community partnerships we do have, because a lot of what we do is because of the community, and we can get things done through their sponsors and donors. And then just some project goals for two thousand twenty-three. We did at the end of two thousand twenty-two and into two thousand twenty-three, we had two full-time positions that had been with the city for a long time, retired. So we did a little bit, we're gonna do a little bit of restructuring here in two thousand twenty-three. We're gonna continue to look for splash, go through the splash pad planning and funding. We're gonna continue to look at the future of the Event Center and Senior Center and our operations there. We're gonna continue to work with the Junior League Hockey Team for relocation to see if it's a viable location for them. We have a couple more projects with the Birch Arena with the HVAC project and the Downs boat project. The Recreation Center has a gutter and downs boat project on the north side. Shady Ridge Park has a new playground coming this year, which was again a big project of sponsors and donors from that neighborhood that raised a bunch of money. There's improvements going into the dog park. We're gonna work on looking at all of our park signage, doing a whole comprehensive look at our parks and start updating our park signage. DFW has a large park project improvements going on, and then Drift Riders Park, the overlook project. There's many more projects, but these are kind of the big projects that we have planned for two thousand twenty-three. Any questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Lynn, down at the camping area, how many hookups are there for full service? Not right now, how many spots do you?
For full hookups?
Yeah.
There's fourteen.
Fourteen.
And that's full every weekend?
Anything else for Lynn? Thank you very much. Moving on, unfinished business. Second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-three dash eight thirty-eight, ordinance amending chapter ninety-five.
Mayor Council, you guys conducted a first reading of this ordinance at your last council meeting. There's been no changes to the ordinance. Just a quick review, more or less what this is doing, just kind of streamlining the process to rent out parks in our facilities. So with that, unless there's any specific questions, staff would ask at the council consider approving the second reading and adopting the ordinance.
Motion to approve adoption of ordinance two-three dash eight three-eight.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat. Motion by Pat, second by Chad, approve the ordinance. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll say nay. Motion carries. Uh, moving on, new business. Uh, resolution number one-five-five-nine-five, resolution accepting bids and awarding contract for Bridge Deck. Realiz- rehabilitation, letting number ten, project number twenty-two dash ten. What are you guys flipping a coin back at or what?
Happy to answer any questions. Um, unlike, uh, some of our previous projects, this one did come in just a bit over, uh, budget. Uh, but we're real happy with the, uh, overall project itself, so. Um, this addresses all of our bridges in town at this point, so, um. Uh, kind of a tighter timeline and window, um, by which to do the work this summer. Um, but, uh, we're looking forward to completing it along with a number of our other street projects, alley projects, et cetera. So if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer that.
Well, I got one for John. On Fifth Avenue that, uh. You applied that soy base, was it that soy base stuff?
Yes.
How did that work out on that one?
It does good, yeah. Um, I mean, once we get a flood seal on it, like we're planning, you know. It'll still protect the sidewalk area, which is good, so.
So that kind of helped out that?
Yes.
I think that's about the best one in town. I think that hasn't had any op or anything that I've noticed. I don't know, you guys been driving around on them, I'm. All right, thanks. You entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll say nay. Carries. Thanks, Mike. Uh, twenty-two thousand twenty-three airport improvements lighting replacement project. Are you true to the story?
Yeah.
You see, he did throttle.
Yeah, he bailed.
This project, the motivation behind it is, is first of all, our lighting infrastructure at the airport is about thirty years old. And, uh, the vast majority of it is incandescent. Um, utilities are the biggest single expense to running the airport. So we have been looking o- over time of how to, um, transition to LED lighting. To reduce the electric cost and the maintenance cost that goes along with it. We have taken advantage of, uh, some grants in the past and we redid our taxiway signage. Here most recently, um, but there has not been a real good aftermarket option for, um. Runway lighting primarily because we, the pilots can control. How bright the lighting is, so the pilot can, uh, click on his mic and it'll bring the lights up. He can click on and bring them back down. And so that control equipment, um, for an LED is, is different than it is for an incandescent system. So we looked at redoing what it would take to redo, um, the lighting system in total. And, um, as we were working on this and right before we actually received the bids, we. Learned from FAA that there are certain lighting systems. That receive priority for LED. Um, those are the, the medium intensity runway lighting, so those are the. The white and yellow ones that are on the edge of the runway. And we have the medium intensity, uh, taxiway lighting. That's the blue lights as you're coming off of the runway. And then the signage, the A B, you know, that, uh, to go on and off the runway and onto the taxi lane. And so those ha- receive higher priority than the other systems. So in order to take advantage of what we hope will be state apportionment funding that we receive from FAA. We split the project into two projects. And so the first one is for the lighting itself. And so what we'd be looking for tonight is to, uh, award, uh, Neo-Ele- Electrical Solutions, the bid for four hundred eleven, seven thousand. Uh, seven, four hundred eleven thousand, seven sixteen, excuse me. And then approve a work order number eight, a construction administration for ninety thousand. And approve the use of two twenty-eight thousand eleven dollars, in essence, from the airport construction fund as the city's. Share, um, local match. Um, and this and the next one, I would award, um, contention upon receipt of. Those, uh, state apportionment money from FAA. If we do not get this, we still may be able to do the project, but we'd have to come back and talk about it. And what that would mean for future, um, projects, so. Um, so that's the first one, and the second one is for the, uh. Nav aids and lighting, uh, again, these are the, the Pappy's, the precision approach. Path indicators, the reels, um, which include a bank of, uh, red and green lights. At the end of the runway, plus the flashing, uh, lights at each corner of the runway. Um, this would include the wind cone. Uh, relocation of that to more accurately reflect what wind is doing at the airport. And then relocation and replacement of the beacon. Uh, right now, our, again, our beacon is an incandescent beacon, um. It's old, thirty-plus years old, and, uh. We've had to rebuild it several times. It's time to, and what we would do is be moving that back. More towards the electrical distribution room so that it would be easier to maintain. Uh, it'll just tip down, we can fix it, tip it back up and away we go. Um, so for this, for this project, i- i- again, would be an award to Neo-Electrical Solutions. Um, the bid wa- for two hundred ninety-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars for the project. Uh, work order number nine from Bolton and Mink, construction administration for forty-five thousand. And approve use of eighteen thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars from the airport construction fund for the city's. Five percent share. We would be using also for this project, a hundred eighty thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars from the. Infrastructure miscellaneous infrastructure maintenance account. Which would be reimbursed with future AIP, uh, entitlement receipts in two thousand twenty-five and twenty-six. So we kind of borrow, as we did for the building, we borrowed from the wastewater fund, we'd do the same thing here except from the. Miscellaneous infrastructure maintenance account. Any questions about the project? I think the biggest benefit by far will be the lower. Ho- uh, costs of operating and maintaining this system, um.
Do you have a percentage on that, John?
There. It, most, most airports experience somewhere between twenty-five to thirty percent decrease in co- in those costs. Much of it related to the actual maintenance, you know, the showing up and checking it and fixing it and changing light bulbs. A lot of that kind of work goes away, so.
Yeah.
Any questions? Uh, can we do them both?
Yeah, that's the desire of the council, you can.
Okay. Um, it'd be a motion to approve the lighting replacement project and the NAV AIDS project.
And John, is that on the condition that we get state?
Yeah, the state apportionment funding through FAA, correct.
So I'd make that a part of your motion?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Motion approve lighting replacement project and NAV AIDS project with the, uh, notation that the funding comes from the state.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
I'll second that.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve the both projects. With the condition we get funding. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll say nay. Motion carries.
Yeah, I just want to thank, uh, Silas Palmer, who's our, um, airport engineer from Bolton and Mink. He, uh. Jumped through several hoops and danced quite a dance to get these, um, projects pulled apart. And so that would, they, we re- receive higher priority and I just appreciate that effort. Um, it wasn't a easy thing to do, so appreciate his effort. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Labor agreement with law enforcement, labor service incorporated, Hutchinson Police Department Sergeant's Union.
Uh, Mayor Council in front of you tonight for consideration is a, a new three-year contract with our sergeants' union. Um, the contract, uh, includes, uh, wage reopeners in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Um, for the most part, the, the contract is similar to what we've, uh, approved in previous years, just a couple changes, one including the. The Juneteenth holiday, once that becomes, uh, official by the, the state. Um, and then there's some additional compensation for some investig- investigative functions. Um, shift differential time, um, was changed and then also providing three days of paid bereavement leave. Um, and then for twenty twenty-three, there's also a seventy-five cent per hour adjustment. Depending on performance reviews. Um, we've gone through a negotiation and, uh. When we make this re- and, uh, mediation, um, and I think we're all satisfied with. At least those of us that are on the negotiating committee are satisfied with the contract that we ended up with and there is a recommendation to approve.
That was a short day, wasn't it, too?
Interesting.
Let's just say it was, uh, it's great that this, I've done negotiations in other communities. It didn't go as smoothly as this and it was great to have everybody just have an understanding, a mutual understanding that we wanted to come to an agreement that was best for the community and our citizens.
Mayor Dan Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll say nay. Motion carries. Uh, setting council workshop for April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three at four PM to review housing study.
Yes, uh, Mayor Council, um, staff have received the, the Maxfield study, um, regarding our, our housing in the community. And so, uh, Matt Mullins from Maxfield, um, is planning on coming out and presenting that report. Um, it will actually be a, a joint meeting with, uh, the Hutchinson HRA. And so we're looking to schedule that at four o'clock before our next council meeting, so they'll go over some of the details of what's laid out in that. In that housing report for the community.
Motion approved, setting the council workshop for April twenty-fifth at four.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to set that workshop. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll say nay. Motion carries. All right, uh, we have, uh, a mock crash at the high school.
Yeah, Mayor Council, this is an added, um, item, um, but, uh, McLeod County towards zero deaths. Um, coalition along with McLeod County first responders and, uh, McLeod County school districts are looking to do a mock crash on April nineteenth. Um, and so, and, and part of that, they're looking to close Roberts Road from School Road to K Street from eleven forty-five to one thirty. Um, our, obviously, our police department will work with that, but any road closures need to be approved by the city council.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second it. Moving by Chad, second by myself to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll say nay. Motion carries. Uh, we have minutes reports from committee of boards or commissions. We have the library board minutes from February two. Twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three, now liquor, Hutch quarterly report for January through March of twenty twenty-three. Boy, they cleared out fast. John, you have anything else for us?
As we suspected, we went straight from overcoats to mosquitoes and, uh, so we're firing up. Um, sweeping as fast as we can, we're patching as fast as we can. Um, we did get the westbound lane of Second Avenue done. We'll turn around, come the other way and then we'll work south from there. Uh, I just wanted to let the public know that, uh, some of the, some of the streets that, that have been, uh, troublesome. This year, uh, Dale Street, um, Second Avenue and Market Street in particular. Uh, those, uh, that we will be having, uh, maintenance project to overlay those streets. Uh, this later this year, so, um, in the meantime, we'll get it as good as, as nice and smooth as we can. But, uh, by the time snowballs fly, they'll be, uh, overlaid and, and it'll be much, much better, so. Uh, but the sweeping will, will keep going. We got most of the main highways done and, and some of the main routes is what we're working on now. In the business areas, so.
It's not too many frost teams this year.
No, no.
But the alleys are terrible.
The alleys are bad, yes. We do, we have gone, uh, there's really, until the frost has completely gone out of those, there's not a lot you can do. We do get through there and try and back drag them and make them passable, um. And, uh, we'll see how it looks. At the end of the week, we're losing snow and very quickly, so I'm hoping we can drive that frost out, so.
I see that, uh, river's running pretty good over the rocks.
Yeah, we're watching that, uh, we went from about six hundred and fifty CFS up at Cosmos early in the day. To, oh, uh, about a thousand at lunchtime, so it, it popped very, very quickly th- today. And so we'll be watching that. There'll be some closures of trails underneath the bridges and things like that that'll take place, um. And, uh, we'll keep an eye on, uh, kind of the next thing that would, uh, happen would be, uh, closure of Second Avenue. Um, west of the bridge there, so we'll keep an eye on that too.
I, I, I noticed when I came to the council tonight, I kind of looked, looked at it and I'd, I think I came up about three feet.
Yeah, I would suspect you're right in that, I, uh, that three-foot mark. I use a little, uh, my little marker down by three M. And I would say you're right on.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
All right, anything else for John? Thank you. Mike, you have anything else for us?
No.
All right, sounds good. Yeah, let's start with you.
Little question, I don't, and it's out of both your wheelhouse, but I've had two phone calls or inquiries, inquiries. You guys know when they're running, is it, is it XL or somebody's running power has nothing to do with Hutch unless it's coming this far? But over by Winstead, they've got it all tracked and they're running, so I've got two people wondering what's going on. Is that something that's gonna affect us or? Oh, do you know what I'm talking about? It's, it's by the Winst- between the Winstead Lester Prairie Turnoff.
Yeah, by the golf course there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know if this was the year for it, but one of these summers, there's supposed to be a roundabout constructed there. And that substation might be in that roundabout area.
I bet you they gotta relocate that.
Cause they're going, it's starting east of there quite a way.
Right.
So I had two people ask, they're wondering, cause you know this recent thing with XL at a meeting here and I think people start wondering what's going on, what, uh.
So.
They want us around in Winstead now too, is that what you're saying?
No, not at all, but they're, you know, they're just.
Um, yeah.
That's correct. I'm pretty sure it is related to that roundabout project out one and I was.
Re- relocating that substation, probably.
That's what they're gonna hear.
Anything else, Pat? Chad?
I don't have anything extra.
Yeah.
I'm glad we're having this April twenty-fifth, uh, housing study and hopefully we'll have an, a chance to review some of the new state codes that are coming down on. Uh. Basically delving into city zoning as opposed from the state level, so hopefully we'll be able to have that discussion and thanks.
That it? That's it? Dave?
Uh, bicyclers are out, bike, ants on an anthill, so, and pedestrians, just be careful.
Yeah.
Don't always watch where you're going, but, so, keep your eyes open.
Yeah.
Good to see them out, but God.
Mr. Sabora?
Nothing else tonight.
All right. Matt?
Um, couple things. First off, our joint meeting with Hutch Utilities is Monday, April seventeenth at two PM. Um, I know we were, we kind of set that date, but we weren't sure what the time, so they'll be here in the council chambers. I would say if you have any specific information or questions for Hutch Utilities that you're hoping they, they would maybe answer at that, just shoot me an email.
I would say if you have any specific information or questions for Hutch Utilities that you're hoping they, they would maybe answer at that, just shoot me an email. And I'll communicate that with, with Jeremy. And then on top of that, um, on April nineteenth, which is a Wednesday, Hutch Utility, Hutch Utilities has got a cost of service or final report. They're doing a study on that. Um, that's at one o'clock. I think that's at Hutch, Hutch Utilities location. If anybody's interested in sitting in on that, just let me know. Um, and then one of the city's two holidays, um, our spring cleanup is uh scheduled for Saturday, April twenty-second. So that's a week from this Saturday. I like to call them a holiday because everyone is anticipating them. Um, you can have two items out. We've got, you know, it's pretty much anything. We've had stuff from hot tubs to refrigerators to and it's interesting because every year I get a call saying, you know what, I sent my stuff out on Wednesday and somebody's already picked it up. Wasn't that people? Yep, man, and all I say is you got lucky so you can send more stuff out. But yeah, you're gonna have people going around looking to to grab stuff, but that's coming up. Um, luckily the, the, the snow is melting, but yep, that's Saturday, April second. Um, and just kind of to piggyback a little bit off what John said with the flooding, if we're blocking off streets or roads, it's for a purpose. And so just a reminder to the public not to, not to go around that. Um, and then, you know, it's, yeah, I'm, I'm interested to hear um with our housing study, cause there, and I've got some concerns with things that are being proposed at the legislature that would have a negative impact, things like uh PUDs they're talking about getting rid of, which that would eliminate a couple of projects that we're looking to do in town. Um, so there's some concerns and issues. Um, one thing I, I did want to bring to the council's attention, I sat in on a legislative update today. Um, and and we start talking about uh sales tax. And, you know, what are we gonna do with ours when it's up in in two years? I found out that there's currently thirty-eight proposals at the state. Um, and the House Chair of the Tax Division has said she is not gonna listen to any of those proposals. Um, and so, you know, some of this is politics, um, that, you know, I think is probably playing out between the, the House and the Senate. But when we start thinking about renewing that, you know, some of these have been in the docket for two or three years, but thirty-eight. And uh, um, when do we, what's the timeframe that we need to? You know, we're, you know, ours expire in two thousand and twenty-six, so I think one of our, our goals, you know, and I'm working on having a strategic plan session with the council right now, is that that might be a big project for us come next year to start working on that process. Now, what's interesting is if, you know, a lot of these cities have done their job. And now the legislature is kind of holding back, you know, the big question is, okay, is there gonna be another conversation then about sales tax? You know, so are we in the precipitous of something changing from a policy standpoint statewide that? I don't know, but it's uh, it's interesting to hear what's going on and just kind of has you thinking when we start thinking about this, what, what process that may have.
What does she have to gain by holding up all those communities' projects?
You know, once again, I don't know the politics on it between the, you know, the House and the Senate, if there's something to do with bonding. Um, I know the, the Chair has, has come out and said that she feels that it's, it, it increases inequities amongst communities. And now it's, it, it helps, the, the, the sales tax, it hurts more of the lower income. Um, and so I don't know if it's a political philosophy or if there's some strategic plan that's going on, or maybe a little bit of both. Um, and so, you know, this is part of what happens and, you know, will play out in the next couple of months, but that was something that really stuck out to.
So Matt, were you here when the first one went through?
No, I was not.
We're not here.
No, so I, and, and I can say it's changed since the first time that we approved it, so.
Mark, you were here though, not?
I was.
Did you have much trouble with getting that one through?
No, not really. We, the uh, the city did a really good job of um justifying the need for the tax and uh had a fair number of workshops to explain what was going on and why it was needed. And it was for a, you know, very good purpose, our water and wastewater plants, so. Um, back then anyway, back then anyway, was more of a legislative philosophy that if the community wants it, the community has approved it with their vote. So why should we stand in the way of that?
Or today, now you have to get approval from the legislature to even take it to a vote. So that's how much that's changed since.
Legislature has to approve us taking it to our public for a vote.
Yes. You know, and the interesting thing is that counties don't need to do that. Counties can simply have a vote. You know, so that's where, you know, as cities, we kind of sit here scratching our head a little bit. So.
Oh, well.
So a lot of interesting things going on, so. That's it for me. Unless you have any questions?
Any questions on that, Brandon?
Motion to advance.
Unless Gary has.
All I have is I wanna recognize uh Jackson Kramer. Uh, he's the, was uh Eagle Scout of the Year. So just wanted to send congratulations to him. It's a big honor for him, so just wanted to recognize him. So now we can go home. Chad?
I'll second.
Although Chad had to make the motion for this, so. Motion by Chad, second by Pat. We adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll say nay. We're, we're adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.